Mission for North Ogden City on May seventh, two thousand twenty five. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm Vice Chair Anisa Green and I will be conducting this meeting today for Chair Nankaro, who is excused. We're going to go ahead and begin with a thought from Commissioner Watson and then we'll do a pledge of allegiance and I can lead that and we'll go from there.
All right, and thought for today is as we begin today's meeting, let's remember that planning is about shaping the future thoughtfully, not just for efficiency or growth, but for quality of life. Every decision we make here impacts not only our present, but generations to come.
That's awesome. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so present tonight, we have Commissioner Watson, Bailey, Webb, and myself, Commissioner Green. The rest of our commissioners are excused. We will move on to item number two, which is consideration and action to approve the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve the April sixteenth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll move into number three for ex parte communications or conflict of interest to disclose.
Minor conflict of interest. I do work for America First, so I have no financial gain. I know that they're on the agenda today, but I just thought I'd at least disclose that, fellow coworkers.
And then do you have like an active decision making capacity in this project?
No.
Think we have any concerns then? So we will move into, sorry, any other interesting? We will move forward then into item number four, which is public comments for items that are not on the agenda. So if we have public comments for items not on the agenda, we'll go ahead and entertain those. Nope, I'm getting a lot of notes. Do we have any raised hands? Okay, I don't think so. Okay, we will move on to item number five, which is consideration and action regarding an administrative application. The site plan approval for America First Credit Union Branch and Offices located approximately three ninety-five east, twenty-six hundred north. Our presenter on this item is Ryan Dunn, our planner.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. So this site plan review for the, it's for a new America First Credit Union Branch Office and offices located on the corner of Washington and twenty-six hundred in North Ogden. Everything they submitted to the city, they, if you've reviewed the staff report, they've, they've done very well and met the majority of the requirements needed for being a commercial, in a commercial zone, being a financial institution. So they've met landscaping, parking, you know, they're under for the building percentages that they're allowed. And as you can see in the renderings, it's going to be a very beautiful building. The, so yeah, in our staff, they've, they've met everything. There were a couple of concerns. So in our commercial code for building entrances, it calls it out that a public facing entrance should face each of the public streets. It is allowed to combine those into a corner entrance, to have one corner entrance. And so in their case, they've, they've done that. However, it's not the corner that's facing Washington and twenty-six hundred. It's more of a southeast corner. Staff is of the opinion that this could still count to meet that public, that entrance being a corner, even though it's not on that street facing corner of the intersection. This, you know, this, this has not been required for any of the other commercial buildings on the, on this intersection. So it, it feels appropriate to, still requires, you know, allow this corner entrance to meet that requirement. With that, my, my comment did recommend having some type of plaza, which is also mentioned in the code. Having discussed that with AFCU, they, that was something that they were concerned about, having some type of gathering area outside their, their entrance, being a financial institution. So that's something that as staff, we're, we would be comfortable having Planning Commission discuss, but it's not something to, to really require. The other, the other item was with our, with our commercial code on these, on Washington and twenty-six hundred, our code requires some type of side amenity to be along these public right of ways. On their landscape plan, they, they show about eight, and so they needed two more. But an item that was, that was missed was along Washington, we have our decorative lights. And they're not on this side of Washington from twenty-five fifty to twenty-six hundred. And the applicant, we've discussed having those installed and they've, they're, they're willing and, and those would definitely meet that site amenity requirement. So on their landscape plan, they, I don't believe they showed them, showed these light posts, but those would meet the, the additional side amenities needed. So staff is of the opinion to, to recommend approval with condition of, of, with a conditional approval that the, the southeast corner meets the standards and then as well as those decorative lighting be added to their landscape plan and meet those side amenity standards. And we have the applicant here to help answer any questions or clarify anything. And then I'm, I'm happy to help answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about the presentation from Ryan?
You mentioned a plaza, but I wasn't really clear on what you were talking about. And you, you talked about America's first, America first's like desires there, but could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so it, it's mentioned in our commercial code for when a corner entrance is, is done, to also have some type of plaza there.
Does plaza just mean like, are we talking about a concrete surface for gathering? Is that?
I don't know if we have a definition. I think it mentions having like maybe some type of pavers, just so it, as like a, as an area. You know, the, the corner of Washington and twenty-six is difficult because there is the light, you know, the traffic light poles there. There are several boxes, I think electrical and for the traffic. So it makes sense not to have that be a, a really good entrance area. And so I had recommended, well, where we're considering the southeast as the corner entrance, maybe consider having this plaza area, you know, off the sidewalk. But, you know, the applicant can, can discuss more on, on why that, that was not something they were, would feel appropriate, you know, for their, their area and for their use. So I just included it because it is in our code for these corner entrances to have something like that. I think with what they're providing with landscape, with the internal sidewalks and as well as an internal kind of between the branch and the offices, there's an area, you know, those can all be considered to meet that as well. So that was the purpose of including it at the time, but with the AFCU's concerns, I think those are, are definitely appropriate to, to not require it.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, we can invite our applicant to come up if they would like and address us.
Good evening. My name is Rick Magnus with AWA Engineering and address, if you want, is twenty-ten North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah, eight-four-one-one-six. I like slow walks on the beach, you know, everything. So whatever you need to know about me is great. I do want to let you know that I, we do have representatives here from AFCU. And Tim and Lance, they are great. They have seen a lot of projects. They have a lot of pride and of AFCU. And can I tell you just a couple of things publicly is that you have wonderful staff. We do, AFCU does a lot of projects throughout the Intermountain West. And for example, your staff report is written so well. And so I've, I've told Ryan that he does an excellent job in, in comparison. So anyway, I just, I wanted to let you know you have a good staff. And I want you to know also that AFCU has a lot of pride in, in that, in this community. This is an important city for them to be in. I think you can tell by the way that we've worked with the city to make this a place. This corner is a challenge a little bit. One thing that wasn't mentioned is that there's a little bit of grade difference here on that corner. If you look at that southeast corner where the main entrance to the AFCU branch is, we've had to run the sidewalk further south to catch up to the grade so that there is a, you know, an accessible route to the sidewalk that is on Washington. We couldn't just do that up at the corner. And then so you have, if you can imagine, we have a building that's kind of sunk into that very upper corner. And so that's what made it difficult to try and meet with things like, you know, like an access, a pedestrian access there. And I think, because now you're talking about incorporating stairs and tripping and sliding and slipping. So that is, that's very important for AFCU and their, their patrons that are, that kind of business. But the rea, the reason why we were just asking that the staff condition be changed to not have to put that plaza in there is twofold. One is we would have to incorporate stairs from the, the sidewalk that exists down to that plaza. Once again, that, that creates a little bit of a tripping hazard. And then also AFCU works really hard and all financial institutions work on trying not to have loitering areas convenient to the front entrances of their financial institutions and, and the plaza would. So in looking at the other conditions and staff recommendations, absolutely agreed to put in those decorative, those decorative street lights that go along there. And for the frontage that we have, you will see three being installed along that, that portion. So that will be a great amenity. I think it'll help to start to tie in some of the other developments in that. We absolutely, we concur with staff recommendations. If we could just remove that one about the plaza. And once again, we concur with those recommendations and I'm just here to answer any questions. And if, if you'd like to hear from anyone from AFCU, we can do that as well.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I completely understand that there's regulations and then there's real life and grades and elevation changes and, and business uses. So I would just point, just for clarity, if anyone wants to maybe get a little bearing for, you know, the plaza and the entrance, they have a nice little landscape plan that I think kind of sells it for me. There's a nice landscape buffer between twenty-six hundred and Washington to add some, some, some curb appeal. I think that to me is as nice of a feature as the, as the lamppost. So the only thing I would say is I appreciate the, you know, at least giving reasons why these aren't possible that are legitimate. And I think the solutions proposed seem adequate.
Yeah, I agree with that. I know I asked about the plaza. I just wanted clarification, but I, I think it would be odd to have it there. And I can see the risk of someone loitering and worrying about someone coming in to rob a bank or whatever. I don't think we would want that as well. So I think it's great. And it does look nice.
Thank you.
I think it looks nice up to the corner. I think it finishes that intersection off in a, a very positive way. So.
Thank you.
Well, if we have no further questions, we can think you've done your job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll sit right here in case any other things come up. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this one? Commissioner Bailey summarized it really well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's personal for so many of us. I mean, Anne Henninger signed all of us up for an America First Credit Union account. It feels like so. There's a lot of, a lot of loyal customers.
You gotta put things into perspective too, you know, I mean, what the corner is now, what the corner is going to be. I mean, you can see it's going to be so much better. It's going to be nice. So.
Yeah, that'll be great. And I think that's pretty clear as to what it's going to look like, very well laid out. It's, I mean, I don't really have anything to fight against here.
No, I think it looks really nice.
So if, yeah, so if we were going to make a motion, it sounds like we're saying everything in the staff report with the exception of the plaza. We're okay to, because that is in the staff report as a recommendation. So we'd want to reflect it. We want to review that.
I'm going to kind of step back again. Again, I, I think as an item of discussion, are, are we okay setting a precedent for the workaround of the corner entry, you know? This is something that is going to be used in the future. And if you look at the corners remaining, you know, there might be some new corners to the west along those, those new development, but right there at the, the main intersection, you know, we've got seven eleven and Mickey D's and seven eleven's probably going to go somewhere. But we've got Wells Fargo at the other side. So we are setting a precedent, I think.
But it sounds like there was a comment that the precedent.
Or am I off, am I off base that there's?
Right.
The other ones don't.
And if they do, they don't use it, right? And so, but it's not a corner. Yeah, it's not a corner entrance.
Yeah.
I think.
So if I were, if I were to summarize in the, the, maybe the precedent that gets set is is a little bit of a horse trade. If you're not going to do that, then it, it now comes to staff and what the city thinks should happen in lieu of that. And I think this is a good, I think this is a good example to maybe deviate just a little bit. I just want everyone to kind of, I think, be aware that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that some of that can come along with a financial institution, right? Because I think the corner entrance is in lieu of two entrances on either side. And you can't have too many entrances into a, into, you know, into a credit union or a bank. And I, I think that we've already set that precedence with Wells Fargo.
And again, I don't know if we are setting a precedent, but if we are, I just wanted that to be something that everyone was aware of.
I think it's a good comment. I think, you know, you mentioned the other available land.
It doesn't change my opinion.
No, it doesn't change mine either. But, you know, maybe something that staff just wants to note, I guess. They're probably already aware of it.
Yeah.
And I guess if I, if I could make a comment, it, this one's a little bit context based. So the corner of seven eleven is gas pumps. The corner of Wells Fargo is a road widening project that took out their previous drive-through section. So it, it didn't leave a, a corner. McDonald's, you'd have to have a ladder, you know, you'd have to jump a retaining wall and climb down a ladder to get a corner entrance there. So there's a little bit of context on this major roadway between the intersection of two state-owned roads that is different than what twenty-five fifty and three hundred east will look like. And where that one down there, a little bit further west and south, you don't have the same four-corner or three-corner representation of something to match or something to look like. So the trade-off here is that you have a really nice building that will anchor that corner. We know that that intersection is primarily vehicular access. It's, it, it is walkable. I mean, there are people who walk there, but it isn't necessarily walkable the way a downtown is walkable. So in looking at it, it seemed like a reasonable trade-off to allow the entrance to be further over in the drive aisle access as opposed to right on twenty-six hundred north. But those are the hard decisions that you're all paid for to deal with.
Yeah. And I, I, I think the intent is let's just take a look at how we're dealing with corners and redevelopment, you know?
Yeah.
And I think we're still holding true to that in, in the code, just saying, hey, because there's, you know, there's other businesses that would come in here that there'd be no reason to ignore the corner. So anyway, I'll put that one to bed, but thought we.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing. And maybe even on the list for, you know, those meetings where we're just kind of doing planning and discussing.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Okay, we'd entertain a motion if anyone wants to take a stab.
You were texting Mr. Watson. You're up.
If, if, if you guys are all right with me making the motion on my, right. Are you okay with that?
I think we're okay with that.
All right, motion to approve site plan for America First Credit Union Branch and Offices located at approximately three ninety-five east, twenty-six hundred north. With the exception of a southeast, well, let's see, with the southeast corner entrance, with the decorative lighting added to meet standards and without a plaza.
With a plaza? There is a plaza.
There is a plaza there. I mean, that, that corner is technically a plaza, so I don't know that we need to add that last part. Am I correct? Ryan, thanks, sorry.
Uh, I'd say it'd be too, without the condition of a plaza.
Okay.
You have it listed as a separate condition.
Perfect, without condition of plaza.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay. We can go ahead and move to evoke Commissioner Webb.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that can be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, who, who seconded the motion? My apologies.
Chad may.
That moves us forward to legislative item number six, which will be a public hearing consideration and recommendation regarding a legislative amendment to consider amending North Ogden Code Title eleven nineteen dash three, design and location of parking spaces to reduce distance requirements for drive aisles and parking lots adjacent to Washington Boulevard and other streets noted as collectors or arterials in the North Ogden General Plan. Our presenter today is Scott Hess, our Community and Economic Development Director. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Commissioner. So at the request of the City Council, the Planning Department's brought forward information to consider amendments to the parking lot design to potentially allow drive aisles to be closer than twenty feet to the front property line along Washington Boulevard and collector or arterial streets. So currently the code reads, all areas of the parking lot with the exception of necessary points of ingress and egress, which we interpret to mean the entrance point and exit point of any parking lot shall be twenty feet from the property line along property lines that are adjacent to Washington Boulevard or other streets noted as collectors or arterials in the North Ogden City General Plan. Those would be twenty-six hundred north, twenty-five fifty, two thousand. And, and I'd have to double check them out. It's possible three hundred east is one of those as well, depending where on Barker, on Barker Depot. If you look down Washington Boulevard, this has been applied pretty consistently. I think that there's a difference maybe between the ambiguity of Washington Boulevard's width between property line and where the curb lies. So for instance, I'm not a hundred percent certain that Maverick's twenty feet that they have between the curb line and the back of sidewalk is to their property line. But you have Maverick, Walgreens, Zion's Bank, Bank of America, Beans and Brews, the entirety of the Smith's Plaza in front of Starbucks, Walgreens, all of those have that twenty-foot plus landscaped buffer. And it begins to break down where you have residentially zoned pieces of property and the older areas of the city like King's Plaza. So you have a little strip in front of Pizza Pie Cafe. Pizza Man is, not Pizza Man, I'm sorry. Kurt's Drive-Thru has a pretty narrow strip there. Across the street, all are Flutter and the, like, ten thousand square foot four bay business next to the Car Wash is pretty limited. Sean, Sean Maynard's Canary Building is essentially no landscaping. It's like building right on the curb, but that building outdates everybody here. You know, that's one of the first historical buildings that we have or one of the last historical buildings we have in North Ogden. We, as staff, we didn't create this ordinance. We inherited it. I've been here for four years. It's been administered prior to that. So John may have the history of when that went in, but my guess is that it's been in for several years. And it was chosen likely to have a landscaped feel along a major roadway as we are, you know, effectively a suburban kind of urban developing community. The request is that we have a business owner who would like to enlarge their parking lot. And they've done significant work in their site plan. We have an application for site plan that was denied at application because, you know, Ryan and I, and Ryan, that was great kudos. Thank you for the staff report that you've written. You do an excellent job. Ryan and I review administrative decisions in order to bring them to the Planning Commission with minimal items that don't completely conform to the code. You know, you are not a legislative body that gets to choose whether or not we have applied the code correctly. Well, that's, that's a lie. You get to decide if we've applied the code correctly, but you don't get to decide what codes you do and don't like and that you do and don't want to follow. So when the application came in, all areas of the parking lot included just the entirety of the parking lot, two included drive aisle that would encroach into that twenty feet. And it, it, the encroachment's between six and eight feet. You know, you're still about fourteen feet from the property line in this case. But the number is the number and we administer the code. So you got to think about this outside of that one, that one business that has its businesses outgrown the size of its site. They need some additional parking. They need to do some additional improvements. And we need to think about what does this do for the city as a whole. There are several businesses up and down Washington Boulevard that this could impact and or benefit. And it's also not unprecedented. We've got some dental offices and older uses that their parking lots were created before this twenty-foot buffer requirement was there. So they are clearly closer to back of curb than twenty feet. I do think it's worth noting that staff approved a site plan with a drive-through use that was constructed closer than twenty feet from the property line. And in talking to city attorney and looking at that, this is Barker Depot along twenty-six hundred north, the two drive-through businesses. Those drive-throughs as they come around are within a six to eight feet of the, of the back of curb, which in that area, right about back of curb is property line. But it was determined that that drive-through aisle was not necessarily part of the parking lot. It was, it functions differently because you'll never have standing vehicles there longer than the dwell time it takes to order and then pick up food and then they're cleared. You know, it's not, it's not a place where you'll receive permanently parked vehicles. But, you know, maybe we interpreted that incorrectly as staff. Staff interpreted that drive-through aisles are different in scope and design than areas of the parking lot. So what I typically try to do is I look at similar cities. I, I think Centerville, Kaysville, South Ogden are good proxies for us. And there are several others I kind of dug through, but I wanted to make the staff report, you know, pretty simple for you to read. Centerville City is more restrictive. Their freeway and Parish Lane, Centerville Marketplace, Parish Lane is similar in size to Washington Boulevard. It's a three-lane, I'm sorry, a five-lane road, two lanes in each direction with a center part turn lane and turn pockets. So it's very similar to what we have. They're a similar suburban, turning urban community. And they require thirty feet from the property line back. So if you're familiar with the Walmart, there's a Chevron, an old Dairy Queen. I mean, there's a bunch of them, but there's a pretty good sized parking strip, landscaping strip, I'm sorry, between the parking lot and the roadway. Arterial and collectors are fifteen feet and minor or local streets are ten feet. So they retain a buffer regardless of what kind of street they have. Kaysville City has landscape buffers of not less than ten feet. So they're a little closer. Two hundred north is probably their. Uh, two hundred north is probably their busiest street that they have and within ten feet. And they have some, on the west side especially, some, uh, drive-through aisles that get pretty close to back of curb for, uh, Fizz, Costa Vida and Meters. Those are all businesses on Flint and two hundred north that get pretty close to the back of curb. South Ogden Code is silent on parking locations. I gave them a call. They are a redeveloping community that's essentially, you know, if you can fit it in and it's sales tax based, then let's go for it and figure out how to say yes. You know, South Ogden has been built out for a number of years. So they're a different type of growing community. So it, it's an area of code, unfortunately, where there's really no set recommendation and it's determined individually. Uh, it'll be up to the Planning Commission to consider the information and at this point, we are providing a recommendation to the City Council. So what I did do is provide you with draft code language. This isn't formatted the way an ordinance would be, but it is the same with red being new texts and strike through being eliminations. And so for eleven nineteen three C five, um, I have added the words, "The exception of necessary points of ingress and egress and drive aisles shall be, uh, no closer than twenty feet from the front property lines." Um, so those would be accepted. So you, you know, an exception. So as you turn the corner off of a a, an ingress point, a drive aisle could be closer than twenty feet. And then what I did keep is that in other areas, the location of parking lot shall be at least fourteen feet behind top back of curb of the street. And the fourteen feet came from the math of top back of curb, four-foot park strip, five-foot sidewalk, and then five feet of something grass. And when you back a four-door long bed truck with a hitch sitting on it, that five feet is essentially the overhang that won't impact the, uh, the five-foot wide sidewalk. So you can still get a car parked with a, a pretty good overhang and not have them overhanging the sidewalk is where that fourteen feet came from. The sixteen feet from edge of asphalt with no curb is installed had the same assumption that you're really edge of asphalt plus approximately two feet for a curb pan top back of curb, which is actually a little longer than that. Um, but it's fourteen or sixteen feet. So your, your worst case scenario, or I guess your least restrictive scenario would be that drive aisles, not permanent parking on these areas could be four feet behind their property line. And, uh, Washington Boulevard has some very interesting property lines. So it's not applied uniformly down the road. Uh, with, you know, with all of that information, the general plan is effectively silent on what parking lot design is. I, I did like that I found a section about attracting new retail development on page forty-three. And there's just a question, can the community norms for parking and landscaping be adjusted to be more friendly toward retail development? And we are a growing city. We have a limited number of areas to have sales tax base growth. And so should we be thinking about how to reduce the restrictions on tax-based producing businesses so that we can continue to, to maintain that part of our budget as we continue to grow, especially out to build out of forty thousand people? Um, and then it's, it's really just one area where Planning Commission has to consider the question on that flexibility. Is this a positive request and change for the city? Are there any additional language pieces that are appropriate? And is the proposal consistent with the general plan? So those are your three markers of what you need to look at when you're doing a zoning text amendment. And my staff recommendation is that you consider the information and make a recommendation to City Council. So whether that is deny, recommend with conditions, uh, or approve tonight, you are the recommending body. This will ultimately move forward to the legislative body, the City Council, for a final decision. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Scott, could you just restate, there was like a piece in there that you said, kind of like worst case scenario with the, with the proposals written. It was at four feet, you said that it could potentially be from the, was it the drive aisle or the actual? Just that little piece that you were talking about.
It's to the property line and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on a business and, and maybe you know where this business is, maybe you don't, but, uh, John, help me, twenty, twenty-one fifty north Tate Sea Chris Building. So twenty-one fifty north and Washington Boulevard. There is a business that has a rear parking. This is a non-collector street. And the parking lot right there to the west, that right there is, I don't want to call it the worst case scenario, but that is about as close as you can get a parking lot to the sidewalk. Um, it does allow a vehicle overhang of that, you know, four to five feet, which is pretty reasonable if you back a pickup truck up. Uh, without putting the, the tailgate or the front of the car right over the sidewalk. So in this case, that could potentially be a drive aisle. You turn the corner and you just, you drive along that and then you park maybe internally. In this particular case, that is, uh, ninety-degree parking just right adjacent to the curb. And I don't know if you want to show the, the business that has requested this. That's your call, John. So this is the, the business that has requested it. It's Big O Tires. They were approved in the nineties. So this code existed and or the setback existed in the nineties. And what they'd like to do is as you pull in off of Washington Boulevard, they'd like to cut that parking, I'm sorry, that landscaping back and go north in order to create more room for cars to pass each other in that particular area. And we, you know, in, in reading the code, the strict reading of the code, we said this area of the parking lot is part of the parking lot and can be no closer than twenty feet. And it's not really good, bad or indifferent from a zoning standpoint. It's just our charge is to administer the code. So City Council has asked us to look at this and we are being responsive to that City Council request and bringing it to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott about his presentation?
Uh, yeah. So we're, in this example, we're talking drive aisle. Right? We're gonna shift from twenty feet to fourteen and a half.
Fourteen and a half from, uh, from back of, from back of curb. So in this case, you could go drive aisle to property line because you're gonna, you will exceed with Washington Boulevard, fourteen and a half feet from top back of curb, just in the right of width, so.
And some of the reasoning is, is there's non-uniform property divisions along Washington. And it, in a way, this clarifies things that we're going from top back of curb to drive aisle with a guaranteed safety allotment for a pickup tailgate to be down and I'm skateboarding and I don't get clotheslined.
Yeah.
When, and just to clarify some terminology, I just want to make sure I'm getting it. If we're looking here at Big O, does the ordinance change if they put ninety-degree parking right there? Is it complies, that's drive aisle or no?
That's not, yeah. So they wouldn't be able to put parking in the area. So and this is the risk you run with all of these businesses is that in a busy scenario, someone may parallel park their vehicle there for a few minutes while they run in and they talk about the service they're gonna receive. And then Big O would restage that vehicle in another area. And this is, it, you know, you'll see the site plan in the future, I'm, I'm certain, but this is one of several changes they're trying to make around their entire site to pick up additional parking because their use is essentially expanded beyond the original design of the parking lot. But this does not say parking can now be closed or permanent parking. It's the drive aisle.
Right. And what is the parking ordinance for this?
Parking would still need to be twenty feet back from property line. But the drive aisle widening would give them some potential parallel parking against their existing sidewalk that they have on their building that they don't have today because their drive aisle would then be wide enough to get somebody in and out.
I mean, not to mention Google Earth captured another problem that they're having.
A bunch of cars on nineteen.
Well, they got a, they got a big rig trying to make a corner here. They ain't making the corner.
You're, you're not wrong. Yeah, good call.
The thing I like about this and the reason I'm asking about the parking and the drive aisle is I like the uni, and I usually don't like anything extra, so take that with a grain of salt. The, I like the uniformity. I mean, I kind of work in this world and I like that we're changing this to top of back of curb. So even though no one asked us to do it, I would, I would almost say you could kill two birds here and get a top of back of curb ordinance for the parking. Just it does, that seems to be the thing here that I think makes sense is anyone's going on their site. It's not fair the way maybe the property lines are divided and the buffers on Washington, but we're getting a solid answer. We're all gonna, we're gonna guarantee this, this distance top of back of curb.
And, and the only, the only, uh, caveat to that or thing I would add is that if you chose the number fourteen feet from top back curb, there are areas of Washington Boulevard that are wide enough that that fourteen feet would put them on you dot property. So I think you would say parking out property line, uh, at, at least fourteen feet back from top back of curb or limited, or limited to the property line. Because there, the property line in this case is still several feet, uh, there's still several feet of landscaping that there is right now before you hit fourteen feet.
Okay. So. But if they had ninety-degree parking going east to west there, that would still maintain the back of.
Yeah, yeah, they'd be something, I don't, and Jason Westbrook, the Big O applicant, which is one of several businesses that could be impacted. I don't have a site plan sitting in front of me, but call it sixteen or eighteen feet is like the closest he could get due to property line. Um, that would still potentially net him some ninety-degree parking or parallel parking that would be obviously beneficial to business.
Are you guys, um, okay with us just moving forward and opening the public hearing at this point to get some more information and then we can continue discussion? Okay, so before we open the public hearing, I just want to go over this really quick for both, um, public hearings that are coming up. Uh, citizens will be asked to limit their remarks or questions to five minutes each. Any materials displayed or reference pictures, written materials are part of the record. It must be left with the commission. Uh, please state your name and city before speaking your remarks. If you agreed with the previous speaker, state your agreement to avoid repetitious remarks. And please address the commission from the podium and microphone and address all comments to the commission. So we will go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Um, and we invite anyone who would like to speak on this, come forward.
Hi, I'm Jason Westbrook, um, North Ogden resident, North Ogden business owner. I own Big O Tires. Um, we've been trying to do a few different things to try and get more parking, get more, to make the parking lot work best for us. Um, we've redesigned it to where we're actually gonna be able to get rid of some of our detention ponds, relocate some of our detention ponds. Um, we were thinking we were gonna have to go with the storm tech system, but they've figured out some different things there. Um, basically, when I was talking with Scott, he had suggested doing a survey on my property. So I went out and I had a survey done on our property. Our property line is actually fourteen feet back from the inside of the sidewalk. So we have fourteen feet of grass before you even hit the sidewalk. And then we have another fifteen and a half feet from there. So we're at twenty-nine feet of grass right now. Um, we started going through and playing with it, going through site plan. Uh, we went down and once I, once I found out that we're that, I was originally trying to get parking, parallel parking or parking into the grass there. I knew that we didn't have enough room then. And I don't know that I, I, we've talked about it on trying to do a diag, I don't want to do a diagonal there because it is a drive aisle. So this is a personal experience with me. I've always told my wife, do not go on that side, go on the south side. I followed her down. One day she went on that side. There was a truck coming out with a trailer behind it. Instead of seeing it and stopping, she kept going and then realized she had to back up, hit a curb, pop the tire. Guess what? I gotta buy four new tires now. I own the place, but they're still not free. Um, so the big, and the point with the semi, we get a lot of deliveries and what people will do is they'll pull in that way and then back up to go around the building. If we can open that up, it will make it a lot more maneuverable. We have tons of trailers, motorhomes coming through there and we just don't have the opening. So part of our site plan is we're gonna open up on the north side, our drive, our driveway coming in on the north side, we're gonna expand that ten feet to open that up a little bit more, but that's still not, people are still gonna try and flow through. And we would just like to be able to try and use our parking for the best of its ability. Um, when I started looking into everything and we had talked and, uh, they had initially said that, you know, with the way that our site plan came in, that we couldn't do it. I started going around and looking at different places. And so we are sorry.
Okay.
Um, for some reason, these are, so we're twenty-nine feet, one inch back from the sidewalk to where our curb is. So just the grass is twenty-nine feet and an inch. Um, if you go to Arby's, it's twenty-one seven, which came in after us. Um, if you go into Autozone, it's twenty-two feet, which came in after us. Um, Maverick is eighteen and a half feet. And that's huge. I mean, for us to be eleven feet deeper and not to be able to use that when Maverick came in long after us. Um, the other one that was brought up was Northview Dental. Northview Dental from their sidewalk to their curb, just the grass is twelve feet. They came in two to three years before us. I mean, they've been there longer than us, but not by much. Um, we're just trying to use our parking lot to whatever we can to try and make the business viable for more years. Um, so we're gonna try and do everything to keep that as just a drive corridor. I can't guarantee that people aren't gonna parallel park there to run in. But we, we are trying to use the property to, to better fit us. So just on ours, even if we cut it back to the property line, we're still gonna have fourteen feet of grass between the sidewalk to the drive aisle. And then in that drive aisle, since we did have to cut into there, it's actually gonna be recessed. So we're gonna have to do a little bit of retaining wall. So that drive aisle will actually be dropped down in a little bit. So you're not gonna be looking directly at that parking. Um, just trying to get the best out of, out of use out. Is there questions that I can answer? Is there?
Well, thank you for that explanation. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comments? Looks like nothing online. So we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That closes the public hearing. Um, we can now do consideration and recommendation and continue the discussion.
I guess my, my initial thought was how is this different from last time we talked about this? And I think that, that uh, if I remember correctly, last time we talked about this, there was parking involved in that. And now it's essentially a drive-through. I mean, if someone does park there to run in, they're probably not parked there longer than it takes to get a hamburger and a concrete at Nielsen's. Um, so I, a, and we still have fourteen feet of grass there. So those are my thoughts initially and, and I'm, I'm open to further discussion.
And, you know, being a property owner or a business owner here, I think I just liked clarity. You know, we, we can discuss the distance change, but I like the clarity of top of back of curb. I mean, if, if we take this gentleman's example, he, he, he went, he went through a process, you know, I mean, I do it all the time in my profession. You, you just submit and then you, you get shut down or you get these comments. And I guess what I'm getting at is after the whole process, I guess what I'm getting at is after the whole process. Instead of being able to go out with a tape measure from the back of curb and kind of eyeball if this is gonna work before moving forward with a project. He was a thousand or two thousand bucks in a survey.
Yeah.
Not, you know, that's not the. It's not necessarily the money here. It's the simplicity of the ordinance to go, hey. And, and then you, you know, according to Scott, there may be some hiccups because you, you know, you're still gonna need a survey to do any project like this.
Yeah.
But at least you get the ball rolling that it's, that it's doable. And then you can get on Weaver County Geo Gizmo and see if you're. And again, eyeball with that tape measure to make sure you're out of UDOT property. Because those parcels would be there. So I like this, that this. One thing that's frustrating with all of the. Rules and regulations about around building and development is it. It pushes more and more development into the bigger hands that can afford to do it.
Mm hmm.
Whereas something like this, you know, with a, a, a local business or a local property owner. They're able to get the ball rolling or at least know if something's feasible without. Having to incur a cost that is sort of trivial to bigger developers. So for me. For me, I'm certain other people have um. Some discussion on the ramifications of a drive aisle, but I like the clarity.
Yeah. I think the clarity is important too for, I mean, really even across the street, there's a lot of vacant land there. It's a lot of things that could happen. And so I think. Clarity is good on that. Um. I, I kind of struggle with this one a little bit still. You know, I, I just. I, I'd love to see how it would impact. The rest of Washington Boulevard, you know, and I'm just having a hard time visualizing that.
Yeah, and I, and I think my visualization from the, from the discussion is if, if and when Washington Boulevard is all built out. It's gonna sort of do this anyway because of some UDOT land, some private land. Whereas this is gonna actually, I mean, it's a boulevard. I mean, there's, there's some weight behind boulevard.
Yeah.
You know, it is supposed to be a tree lined thing and we still are. Securing that landscape buffer. But this actually provides more of a uniformity, more of a. French formal boulevard by we're going back of curb.
Yeah. Yeah, I buy into that.
I think in the grander scheme of things, we are giving up that buffer. You know, the twenty foot buffer of landscaping, but when you're looking down perspective wise, Washington Boulevard standing in the turning lane. This provides a little bit more. Uniformity.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't even called a boulevard, I don't know how much this would have an effect, but there isn't. You know, there is a desire there.
Yeah, no, I, I, I see whether it was called a boulevard or not, like the, the value for North Ogden City. To create some uniformity there, you know, obviously it's gotta be, you know, we have to have. Safety, you know, visual impairment of people turning on and off. What is a pretty busy street and. But, but it feels like that that uniformity could really help. That section of road.
Yeah.
Because we've got, it's kind of all over the place.
I think.
Spots and I, and I thinking both about the south stuff down where Big O is and all that vacant land, but also. It's getting built in, you know, filled in a little bit more, but how could those businesses that are even. More commercial or bigger, how could turn over, turn over and change? And what would people do? And it would be really great. I, I like top of back of curb. Because I think it, it does create like a, a more of a visual uniformity with less ambiguity for all these different property lines.
Yeah, and I have a question for Scott that I think adds on to this. If I was building a, a Washington Boulevard facing building, what's my setback from top of back of curb?
Uh, well, it's zero to property line. You could build, it's like a, it's similar to a form based code. So where the cannery building is. One vision for Washington Boulevard would be businesses that all sit right out at. At property line and you have a more urban type of feel, feel. And we haven't developed that way. So there's, as this issue has come up, there have been. Multiple discussions about why don't, why do we restrict parking, or sorry, why do we restrict cars from being zero lot line and we allow buildings? It's not really a safety issue of a fixed hazardous object. The car is there or the building is there, but it's a, it's a form thing and.
And I think the basis of my question is, is. Buildings will always be able to be closer than a drive aisle and parking and we're. I mean, I'm more of a fan of the, of the more urban development of, I mean. The cannery is, I just think it's a fun little, it's a fun little situation right there on, on, on the boulevard. But again, I think what I'm getting at is just the. The other things that aren't involved just with the drive aisle, right? So buildings can be closer. We're not, we're still not competing with that and there still is an incentive. That you can use more of your property in a way, if you push a building out to Washington Boulevard. So if that's your. That's your thing or not, at least we can kind of consider that, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna make an adjustment or, or vote on making an adjustment. I like the uniformity and the, the, the removal of the ambiguity of the whole process. I think that's the big thing for it. But with Scott answering these questions, I don't think that we're giving up. Putting buildings and, and creating a, a corridor or a boulevard that way, you know, kind of how it's built out down in Ogden, right? We got those. Old shops and whatever right there often. It is a, it's a fun little situation, you know?
It is a fun situation and I can see that the King's parking lot could significantly improve. If things were. Up at the curb and then you have all that parking behind it and you, you know, use that creatively and that could be.
So we're not really removing an incentive, right? We're, we're still allowing and, and. Encouraging maybe a little bit to, to build closer to Washington and put the parking out back. Um. Anyway, that's kind of, that's kind of my thought. I think just the, the biggest win here is just how can, this is a local business. How can other local business, businesses benefit from it? Some, some had to conform and that's unfair. But in the future, when they're having these things, they can get the answer quite quickly, quickly by reading the code. And that's the information that's pertinent. So.
I do think this is a really unique and well, maybe not unique, but clean and smart way. I think Scott's draft here is really awesome for all the reasons you've articulated. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and throw out a motion. We can continue to discuss. We don't have to in discussion, but. Perhaps we could make a recommendation that we amend the North Ogden uh, code title eleven dash nineteen dash three. To reduce distance requirements for drive aisles and parking lots adjacent to Washington Boulevard as drafted specifically here in the staff report. So how do we feel about?
I don't, I don't think I have any comments on the motion. I think um, something that could be tabled for a later discussion is we've. We've got some other ambiguity on what's a drive aisle. And. Right? What you had, what, what you talked about approving on another project that it was your interpretation. There'd be no parking, you know?
Right.
So. I have no qualms about this, but. There may be some. Definitions, I guess.
Yeah. And so can I ask for clarity on the motion?
Yes.
So the motion was to approve as drafted.
Correct.
And the approve as drafted is that drive aisles can be closer than. Twenty feet, but no closer than the fourteen feet of top back of curb. And should we add the language and or at property line? So it's, it's the restriction. It's like the, the greater of fourteen feet from top back of curb or at property line.
That's a great point. I missed that. And, and or property line, whatever.
Not the lesser of, but the greater of.
And, and my computer died. So Ryan, do you mind helping me take?
You need me to say it again with that included? I can't.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind, I mean, and that's a friendly amendment or a correction. So I'm not asking you to do it. It's just, uh, it was a clarification in the motion.
Clarification because I, I, I wanted that to be that way. Um, and to be clear, I'm a huge proponent of us retaining the green space along this. I just think that this achieves that without. Too much of a, of a give on the part of the city. Um, so I'm going to amend my motion to state or my, yeah, motion for a recommendation to city council that we amend the North Ogden code title. Eleven nineteen three to reduce driving requirements for drive aisles and parking lots adjacent to Washington Boulevard as drafted in the staff report. Um, and but, sorry, oh, I think I, um, but also allowing for it to be twenty feet from the front of the. Park, no, sorry, it's the fourteen foot. Just kidding. Hold on, I'm gonna have to start over. It's the fourteen foot back of curb or property line, correct? Okay. Does that sound right to you?
Greater.
The greater of.
The greater.
Yeah.
And that is just drive aisles, not parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Greater. Sorry, let me actually write it down here. Um, because you're, the written one in the staff report does not have the property line.
It doesn't. No, we'll, we will address that. We'll change that in the draft ordinance, moving to city council based on your recommendation. And that would clear up the ambiguity of the drive throughs because then we wouldn't have to interpret it. It would just be a portion of the attached parking lot, meaning the drive through in the asphalt. Could be at parking at fourteen feet from top back of curb and or at property line. And that to me is again, how I would interpret it and or I, I could use it as a justification for how to interpret it.
Okay, so maybe we can even try it as we make a recommendation that we amend the North Ogden title eleven nineteen dash three. Um, as, as listed directly in the staff report with the only altercation being that we say. The um, let's see, at least fourteen feet behind top back of curb of the street and or property line, whichever is greater.
Yes. Hey, I'll second that motion.
Okay, do we want further discussion or? I know you were, are you wanting to?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Um, we will go ahead and move for a vote with a motion in a second. Um, Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Webb?
Yes.
And I vote yes on this recommendation. Okay, that takes us to item number seven. Which is a public hearing consideration and recommendation regarding a legislative amendment. To consider amending the North Ogden title eleven dash nine M dash ten. Animals and fowl to remove inconsistent distance requires, requirements for chicken coops. Our presenter is once again Scott Hess, our community and economic de- um, de- development director, Mr. Hess.
Thank you. And I'm gonna put my glasses to use because my computer has died. So I'm gonna read this off my phone and let's see how we do. Um, so this is an amendment requested to title eleven nine M ten animals and fowls. To potentially remove inconsistent distant requirements from chicken coops. Um, this was asked for, you know, at the request of the city council, again, based on a series of public comments. Some applications that have been denied. We have had uh, neighbor complaints about the proximity of chicken coops. And so staff looked at the ordinance. It's worth noting that this is in two places in our code. So you can think of our code as. Uh, the city code, which is everything else that is not a land use code. And then title eleven is the land use code and, and title eleven. Uh, I'll look at Ryan. Thank you. He's given me a. Doing an assist so that I can read this. Um, title eleven is bound by the state code, the Land Use Development and Management Act. And that requires you, planning commission as the land use authority to hold a public hearing. And I have been in chicken. Public hearings that have like fifty people in them. So I'm shocked that the Facebook post didn't go out. And thank you all for coming and, and I hope you make comments because you should. Um, but this code language exists in two places in the code, in the city code and in title eleven. So this is the formal process to have a public hearing in title eleven. Because the animal keeping ordinance in the city code can just be changed by the city council. And they could do that, but then there'd be an inconsistency between the two. I don't know the decision making between why. Um, it's in both title eleven and the city code. And my guess is that it's because it regulates. Chicken coops as accessory buildings. That's my only guess. And we regulate accessory buildings in residential zones. Um, but at, you know, at that long way of saying, let's get into what the inconsistencies are. So eleven nine M ten. There is an animals and fowl reference that says barns, coops, pens or corrals. Shall be no closer than fifty feet from any dwelling and no closer than seventy five feet from adjacent dwellings and at least one hundred feet. From the public street. And we have denied several chicken coops on ten thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots. Because there may not even be fifty feet between the back of the house and the fence line, let alone. Fifty feet plus seventy five feet to their neighbors when animals, large pens and large agricultural pieces like our, our RE twenty, which is. Rural, residential rural, uh, twenty thousand square foot, half acre lots. But as it states, um, this effectively makes chicken coops illegal in ninety plus percent of the residential homes in North Ogden. You know, we have this huge swath of the city that swings around in the residential R one ten. That's somewhere between nine and fifteen thousand square foot lots is like our bread and butter lot. Uh, chicken coops are treated the same as accessory buildings. However. Coops must be maintained not closer than twenty five feet from any dwelling on an adjacent lot. And that feels like we added it after the fact, but then did it. It's just a chicken coop. And then we have an entire section in here about. How the feed is stored, the clean water is available, um, the number of square feet in a chicken run that a chicken has to have. Uh, they, if they stay in the coop all the time, the number of square feet each chicken has to have. So you have the uh. Code enforcement teeth behind it to make sure that we're not making really horrible living conditions for these chickens. And it's all built into this one section. So staff being kind of pragmatic to the fact that we have. Let's call it four thousand residential connections of lots that are between ten and fifteen thousand square feet. Simply eliminated the words coop out of the upper ordinance and the words. For the housing or keeping of animals or fowl. And left in barns and corrals, hoping that we don't have horses on ten thousand square foot lots, which would not be permitted generally. Um, and then down below, we referenced eleven nine M eight, which is the residential section of the code that regulates accessory buildings. So you, you have the circular reference there that it's gotta be twenty five feet from a neighboring dwelling, but that you might, you kind of. You should go and look at the accessory building standards here for height, design, uh, you know, any number of things. It's gotta match the house. It's gotta be pretty, um, how it's built. And that, and then the other is taking out letter K. The permit for keeping chickens must be revoked upon the conviction of the. Permit holder of a violation of this section. I think years ago, we had a six dollar chicken keeping permit. It's like licensing your dogs. And we may have collected one or two of those and then it just was never collected again. So it's something that's on the books that we aren't administering. And not by any fault of anybody. It's just simply, it's really difficult to administer these because. People build chicken coops and they have chickens and you don't really find out about them until the neighbors complain because they're keeping it really badly. Um, but I would say we have, you know, we have dozens or a hundred. Illegal, not illegal chicken coops in the property that largely go unnoticed right now, non-code enforced. Um, that you would. It would be impossible for them to come into compliance, even if they came in under a land use permit and attempted to make them in compliance. And they, they really out, outside of the ones that are. That are very nasty and aren't kept clean and attract rodents, they go largely unnoticed. So. That, that's where staff's at. I, I think that we have the protections in place for code enforcement to go out and do animal enforcement essentially and keep chickens clean. Um, you're always gonna run into, you know, neighbors who dislike it generally and where it attracts rodents. Um. But this is one of those things with either animal husbandry or the costs of things go up and we promote. You know, this like the victory garden thing, you know, grow your own food at home. And I think that we should be as staff, my personal opinion, my professional opinion is that we should be. Giving this same bundle of sticks, property rights to more of the city than we currently are because. The fifty foot and seventy five foot really restricts it down to half acre, one acre, you know, the large, the large parcels and those are diminishing. Uh, constantly, the number of those large parcels. So with that, again, um, the general. So with that, again, um, the general plan does not directly discuss animals and fowls. There are several references in the history of animal keeping in the city, but it's largely silent on urban chickens. Which, uh, in staff meeting, they thought it meant herbs and chickens. So like, I should have put a recipe in here, cause that would have been funny. But, but for staff, I think it, it's important to balance proper, private property rights with the potential for impacts to surrounding homeowners. And the commission should determine if updating this is in the best interest of the city. So our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing. Um, which if this moves on to city council and that's where you get the big group of people coming, that's unfortunate. That's. We have promoted this, we've made public hearing notice. This is the opportunity for the public to weigh in. At the city council, there is no obligation for them to hold a public hearing. Um, to their credit, our city council typically will listen to public comments, but this is the opportunity for the public to really come and weigh in. Um, so consider the information, discuss the proposed changes and please provide a recommendation to the city council. So that we can move this one forward. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Is the general direction of, of the setbacks that we're gonna? The setbacks are the same as any accessory structure for the coop.
With the addition of the twenty-five feet to your neighboring property owner. If you build a tough shed and it's six feet from your house and three feet from your property line, we don't care how close that is to your neighbor's property. There's no like adjacency requirement to your neighbor's property. And typically, my recommendation would be to eliminate any of those references to an adjacent property owner's home. Because it becomes a who came first, like. If a chicken, if a chicken coop were built and it made the new home illegal. We would lose that court case in disallowing that building permit. Or saying, hey, you're, you're, you're gonna move your house fifteen feet, cause there's a chicken coop there. Like, we, we would lose that fight. Um, so it's administered a, and when there is a new home, I'm sorry, a new subdivision. We make that note on the plat, but then when homeowner number two builds their house, we don't do the like reverse double check. And that's the same as swimming pools that have a thirty-five foot requirement to new homes. That happens all the time. Brand new house gets built with a swimming pool, house number two gets built. And we are hands off on the measurement there, cause you, you know, you can't slide a swimming pool, so. Uh, but as it is, there's a proximity requirement and, and chicken coops, we, we live in a dry, arid environment. Luckily, they're not horrible. When it gets really rainy, if they're not taken care of, they're stinky for sure. And the largest is if they aren't taken care of, they, they do create rodent issues, or they can create rodent issues.
And this isn't applicable to what we're doing, but I think it, it's related. Is there any enforcement of a smelly chicken coop? Is, is there any determination on what's too smelly?
Um, well, they need to be, I mean, let me read this really fast. Yeah, the, so letter I, the coop and enclosed area must be kept clean and sanitary. To prevent any insect breeding, vermin attraction, nuisance, or offensive odor past the property line. So I guess they would walk the property line and do the sniff test. You know, I'm, I'm not in code enforcement and I don't know how many of these have been code enforcement on, but they have to be pretty nasty before they are. Uh, code enforcement's called that.
And, and I think the base of my question is. We're doing the land use thing. No matter which way this goes, there is some other enforcement for the sanitary and stench. That this could happen, that, that, that could happen with this. So there's, we're not disregarding any of that. We're just.
No.
Kinda like the last one, a little bit of clarity and opening this type of animal husbandry up to more. Is? Is there any properties in North Ogden that this would still not be possible? Or a large swath, I guess. I know there's probably some outliers, but.
Yeah, there's, um, I guess I could point to a few specific subdivisions. Uh, Quail Ponds has five to six thousand square foot lots. And typically the house was built at the building box, so that would be their rear yard is only twenty feet. And their neighbor might be ten feet from them. So they, they'd have a hard time. They'd have to put it like right in the center of their lot to hit the twenty-five feet to each house. Um, that's one, the subdivision just across the street that is all private. And, you know, they may or may not through the HOA even permit chickens, but those are five to six thousand square foot lots. Cherry Springs Villas, which are four plexes, but everybody owns their own individual piece of it. Wouldn't have backyards large enough. So there are, there are subdivisions that this would not still be permissible in. But it, for the most part, uh, I think this would cover most of them. And Ryan, you know, we may ask, wanna ask Ryan. Ryan's administered the land use permits for the last eighteen months. And we've had several discussions about it and he's denied several. And this comes down to a funny thing about how you interpret the code is that when there are incorrect references in a code. I like to do like tie goes to the runner, you know, so you give the less restrictive of the two. And another op, another way to interpret it is you, you administer the more restrictive code. Until somebody essentially pushes back on you. So we've denied several based on interpreting the more restrictive code. Which I'm fine with, it's just, you know, everyone has a different perspective on how you administer code. Uh, but Ryan, you've, can you give us like a number of how many you've denied and or phone calls or?
Honestly, I'd say, I don't know if I ever got a, maybe one or two last year, but since January of this year. I, there's, uh, several dozen people call in asking about our city ordinance around. Uh, keeping chickens and their requirements. And so. Uh, and, and so we've, and yeah, we've had, I don't know if I've ever had a land use permit in the year and a half I've been here. But yeah, just this, this year, um, I think we've had three come in. I know I denied one for sure. Um, uh, due to the setback requirement.
Seems like pragmatically, needs to be like a seven thousand square foot lot or larger to get the twenty-five feet. Is that accurate?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
It seems like pragmatically, you need to kinda have a seven thousand square foot or larger lot to fit something in reasonably.
Yeah.
Is that?
Or a small coop, it's.
Or a really small coop.
Kind of depends on your lot width. When you get down to those like fifty-five, sixty foot lot widths, that's when you're having a difficult time.
Yeah.
Doing it.
Yeah.
We don't have any subdivisions right now that are zero lot line homes, that, that's happening in some areas where. One side of the house is built right on property line and the other side has five or six feet for like the mechanical equipment. And then the next house is at property line and same thing. So those ones get really restrictive, but I think narrowest side yard we have right now is eight feet. We had, we had smaller at Century Farms, but that's now a townhome development. And those through HOAs typically don't permit chickens anyways.
Okay.
Well, let's, um, if everyone, there's no ma- major objections, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And I think we have a few members of the public that might want to address us. Ryan, did you, sorry, were you, were you?
Sorry.
Um, welcome, and if, your name and city?
Okay, um, my name's Paula Magnussen and I live in North Ogden. And let's see, I, let's see. It, in April, I, I addressed the city council and they were so totally confused. I made stuff for you guys, so.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Things that I'll be referring to.
Okay.
Also, let's see, um, this is what the chicken coop, um, permit used to be.
Okay.
And what he was just discussing on the bottom, additional requirements were on the chicken coop. And that was gonna take it and kind of act on to. Somebody else. So.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for making this.
Yes.
You're very welcome. Okay.
Anyway, um, Ryan knows me quite well. I, I've been down to see him four or five times. And, uh, since, since last October. Okay, and. Let's see, just to kinda couch things, um, what? I have a neighbor that, um, what, has a chicken coop. And she, she put it up when, when I was gone for the summer last summer. And when I came home, um, what, it was very apparent that she had no idea. Or, 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 or knew, but was, just thought, oh, it doesn't pertain to me. Um, what, I had chickens in my yard, I had ground cover that was eaten. I had, had, had a rooster in, in, in the backyard. And so anyway, so I educated myself. So I'm not really super up on chickens and whatever, that kinda stuff. Just so you know kinda where I'm coming from. And yeah, so it, um. I, I tried to solve things very amicable, amicably with, with my neighbor. However, all the discrepancies in the code really made life kinda interesting for me. Okay. Uh, let's see, r- right here, um, uh, uh, am I, am I allowed to, to visit Ryan? He, um, let's see, it's on this, looks like this, okay. Um, he, he kinda highlighted for me fifty feet, se- seventy-five feet. And, um, said, you know, it shouldn't be twenty-five feet. So I was kinda going on that and that has caused some, some issues. However, um, at, uh, a- a- at, at the April meeting, it became clear that, that the city council wanted to. Make it so that seventy-five feet was kind of really way too much and fifty feet was a bit too much. So I would just like to start to say that, you know, all, all these things are intended for animals and fowl on residential properties. With minimal impact on neighboring properties and neighborhoods. So, um, well, one of the things I, I was told is some of the lots only have like a twenty foot backyard. And you, you have land coop, land use code, article C, you know, and it refers to, um. Small lots and permitted uses and it says household pets. It doesn't say anything about chickens. And then I thought, okay, now what do the other ci- cities kinda look at? So I kinda highlighted these things because I don't wanna read all this to you, so I'm just gonna hit on the pink things. So I, I can land use, it said, no closer than five feet from a property line and at least twenty-five feet from the neighbor, neighborhood. And the rear yard must have a minimum of, of two thousand square feet of open area. And then continuing on the back age, back, back of that page. Um, let's see that, um, that, this is one, one thing that I would really, really like to see you seriously consider. It said, coops can, excuse me, coops cannot be constructed out of tarps, dilapidated or scrap materials. But must be materials designed for exterior exposure and typically found on the exterior of homes except for wire mesh. Or netting used to allow for air circulation in a coop. And then moving on down to Sunset Ci- Sunset City, yeah, Sunset. It said, um, continues on, a coop shall not be constructed out of scrap materials or dilapidated. And that it should be finished in all well, all weather exterior. And then Washington Terrace, what? Um, i- i- it says, um, a minimum num- the maximum number pet, of hands permitted. Under six thousand is up to three, six to eight thousand four, above, above eight thousand six. And in North Ogden city code, it goes anywhere from ten up to thirty, depending on, on the size. And it continues on about the scrap materials and the dilapidated, dilapidated materials in, in, in Washington Terrace. Um, and, and finished, finished wood. Um, and it says at least fifteen feet from the primary residence bu- building and at least twenty-five feet from the adjoining property. And at least ten feet from any property line. So it kinda varies between five and ten feet and to, to, three feet. And. Um, and then we'll be on to South Ogden, keeping chickens. It continues on with the scrap and dilapidated material, the tarps and non-rigid materials for shading or roofing. Exterior finished materials, you know, should be typical residential exterior materials. Except that openings may be covered in a wire mesh or netting rather than glass. And there it says five feet from the property line, ten feet from, from their dwelling and twenty-five feet from those on adjacent lots. Um, so, what? I would really li- like to see a nice looking coop, okay? A nicer looking coop, you know, twenty-five feet away from your property. To me, that's a little close. I mean, what, uh, what? My neighbor has four chickens. And one morning I woke up to, I, I thought they were being eaten by raccoons out there. It was like cluck, cluck, cluck. And like somebody was being str- strangled and tortured out there. So I mean, it, it's not consistent, but I mean, chickens are not really. Quiet little creatures, so anyway, however, uh. I, I would really ask, ask you to serious, seriously consider what the construction is of the coops. And the appearance of the coops, um, what? I'm sorry, I get a little emotional because, what? Um, in between the rooster that stayed for two months and started crowing at four o'clock in the morning. And just some of the things that have gone on anyhow. So, uh, I would strongly encourage you to, so that, um. What, no, so when I came home, I looked at the coop and I thought, oh, I've got a homeless community in my backyard. I mean, it was tarps, it was dilapidated wood, it was old wood. And I'm like. I thought we were friends, you know? Anyhow, however, um, you, you were talking about all the different places, all the codes and things. And I, I spoke with Ryan numerous times. It's like, there's a code here, 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 here. So anyway, here I put North Ogden city codes on here for you. There's city code fourteen, one, one point seven about, you know, pro- prohibited acts and activities. And it, it says, um, twenty feet from any, you know, any dwelling and seventy-five feet from the adjacent lot. And then land use code, it kinda state, says the same things about seventy-five and, and things. And there's land, land use code eleven dash nine A three. Um, it says twenty feet from the existing dwelling and seventy-five feet from the adjacent property. So it kinda repeats it on and on. And then with the chicken permit that's no longer online, here's all the additional requirements. And that's where the twenty-five came from. It came from the chicken permit that I believe it was like, last time it was used was twenty nineteen. Okay, so all those additional requirements were kind of the attachment to the chicken permit. And what, and also it, it's still in your consolidated fee schedule of, of five dollars annually. And. A- a- and it, and then I added on fourteen dash one dash ten. Um. Yeah, so that's where, where everything is, so that when you go in and fix things in the code. It's everywhere in hidden places. And just to kinda end on a no- lighter note, I think it's interesting that, uh, you can have ten, ten, ten hens. Um, on less than a ha- half an acre. But you can only have four gerbils in your house. Which I think I just, what, I happen to like gerbils. Anyway, but thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me or anything?
For you for being here and express, I think your points are well taken about how many different locations, you know, the code is, or the, the chicken rules are found. I know that's a concerted effort that John really wants to clean up and, and help, um, not John, sorry, Ryan, really wants to clean up and help. Um, streamline for both himself and residents.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I just wanna say thank you for expressing that. I, myself, we have backyard neighbor chickens, we don't, the neighbors do. And, and they, they are loud, you're absolutely right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You.
But you know, what, actually, the, the major reason I came is to. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you know, what, actually, the, the major reason I came is to, to, to really ask you to really, I mean, you know, not tarps and old crappy wood and.
Exterior.
Yeah, you know, you know, exterior that actually looks nice. So you don't walk in the backyard and think, oh, yeah.
And so for clarity, there, there's no fence buffer between you and your neighbor?
Excuse me?
There's no fencing between you and your neighbor? Or is it see-through fencing?
Okay, let's see, right now it is kind of a, a concrete, concrete brick wall for, uh, what, a bit of it. And then there's like some, some, what? Nice trees, I mean, probably bigger around, just kind of a pillar. And there, there's some, there's logs, you know, so it's kind of like a log fence. And then it's just on the other side of this, this log fence. So I mean, there's not, what? Any kind of, um, screen or, or fence or anything like that.
My question for clarity, you said twenty-five feet from property line once. In, and I wanted to clarify, did you mean property line or building? Like neighbor's house?
Um, twenty-five feet from the neighbor's house.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, what?
That, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page.
Yes, and, um, that's why I kind of highlighted it there for you because I don't do public speaking like this. So.
Oh, and I certainly wasn't picking on you.
Just spoke.
No, I, I thought you did a great job. You were very clear. I just wanted to make sure on that one point.
But you know, I also wanted to point out, you know, the, the different communities, you know, Sunset and West, you know, South Ogden and, and things so that you'd have some frame of reference.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up.
I'm Chicken Hill.
William Decker, I'm a North Ogden City resident. I do not have chickens. Uh, I have in the past in a rural area. I understand the ladies' comments here. Uh, I don't understand all these setback numbers and I got lost in all of that. If I understood it right, on a third of an acre lot that I've got, I've got about a one hundred square foot area on the back of my lot adjacent to Pungy Water Property that I could put chickens if I wanted to. The restrictions need to be loosened up so that, uh, people on smaller lots can have chickens legally. I do know people that have chickens. I don't know if they're doing it legally or not. They're keeping them clean. They're doing what they need to do to control rodents. Uh, the pens are, are nice. I think there should be requirement in there to control the migration of the birds onto other people's property. Yes, that should, I agree with her comment there. Do I consider them noisy? No. I love chickens. I, I love to hear them. Same as I like to hear children out, out playing in the neighborhood. I think this young lady over here might be offended by having a rooster next door. I personally, I would love you putting it in the code where people could have roosters on their property. Uh, currently, the, the retailers that sell the birds try to sell you just pullets, so you, you just have hands. Well, you get a cockerel in there every now and then. Uh, it used to be, last year, you could return, uh, within eighteen weeks. And you wouldn't get, get your money back, but you wouldn't have to deal with the rooster. They won't take them back anymore. You got to find a way of disposing of them. Some don't want to do that. Some will just slaughter and eat it. I think we should allow, um, one rooster, uh, per yard. And, uh, we should, uh, do something to get uh, county, state, whatever other regulations outside North Ogden City, coordinate with people to get those rules changed so we can allow things. But we need, do need to make sure that they're kept clean. Uh, the folks that I know that have, uh, chickens, uh, do their best to control rodents. We, I've seen rodents, uh, and I've done something myself to help control the rodents too. Even though I don't have the chickens. So work on, uh, getting some standardization and making it so more people, uh, the, and, uh, if they can be allowed to have a rooster, they won't, if they're raising a flock of chickens, they don't have to go out and buy new birds every year. Cause if they have one rooster, they can propagate their flock.
Thank you. Thank you for spending your time being here, sharing that. Thank you. Any other public, um, comments? Looks like.
Could I add a little bit?
Um, I, yeah, we could do that if you want to take a minute, just a minute.
Okay, um, let's see, um, as far as with the rooster, um, let's see, IFA will, will take back a rooster. Doesn't matter what age, um, oh, they.
My neighbor informed me of this about two hours.
Okay, so, so then he just recently called because I called IFA back in, like.
Would you, would you mind?
Recent change.
Recent change, okay, okay. And let's see, and also that there are rooster rescue sites. There is, there's also a fellow on Payson that will take a rooster, which is where my neighbor's rooster went, um, after a bit, so.
So there are some options for individuals.
There are some options.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other public comments? Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, the public, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
I, we are missing, he'll be right back. So, is, can we?
You're okay.
Are we good? Okay. Okay, so we, the public hearing is closed. Um, so now we can enter discussion.
I, I'm a blabbermouth, I'll start, I guess, you know, uh, again, I, I do like the clarity and I do appreciate the public comments here. I think there's a good chance we can, you don't always get the opportunity, but I think there's a good chance we can, um, address a lot of the concerns. But if I were just to say, just personal opinion here, I'm all for allowing and opening this up to more people. Like the gentleman discussed, I think that should be a, a property liberty here that we don't encroach on. I'm also in favor seeing this young lady's, uh, presentation. I do begrudgingly like the, the language about the look.
Exterior.
Tough, because I don't have to, yeah, I don't have to enforce it.
Scott, can we clarify just really quick though, regarding the exterior? Um, where we said like, there's the accessory building, we're referring back to the code for that. Does that accessory building standard of exterior apply? Or is that not? Is that was something I was wondering with this?
Like some and some. If you build a large chicken coop, uh, two hundred and one square feet, uh, ten by twenty and this big, then you have to match the chicken coop to your house in some way. You know, colors, trim color, you have to have a twelve-inch eve. But under two hundred square feet, we permit lifetime, you know, Rubbermaid life, Rubbermaid and or lifetime sheds. Um, any of the tough sheds, any of that stuff, right? So it, under two hundred square feet, we really don't administer the size. And so in that case, for a chicken coop, under two hundred square feet, we look at proximity, we look at total under roof coverage so that it doesn't exceed our stormwater standards of fifty percent lot coverage. We don't look at design, material, and, and we could certainly add that in those like A through K type of provisions to say chicken coop must be constructed of all-weather materials. Uh, we don't want it to necessarily match the house. A lot of people like their chicken coops to look like a little old barn. We've got red ones painted with white trim and the house is a modern brick home. So we, that, I think that's a great suggestion to make sure that we're not getting, uh, tarps and, and chicken wire and fence posts creating kind of like temporary chicken coops. I think that's, that's definitely a suggestion we could look at. Um, but I think we would probably go with something along the lines of, of like all-weather materials. And then, but let it be built as it is.
Yeah.
Unless you have really, unless you have more specific recommendations. And I like, I like the handout. Thank you. That's really helpful to look at. Um, so we can, we can look at that if you want to address and or make a recommendation that we consider what materials would be utilized for chicken coops. Um, yes, most of our accessory buildings, I mean, that one of the, it's, maybe I'm going to say a blanket statement here, but North Ogden, one of the benefits that we have here is that it is a very high-value community. So rarely do we get these improvements on properties that are uh, undervalued. You know, you have a lot of really expensive homes and oftentimes when somebody puts something in, they're putting in a five-figure costed, uh, right shed or tough shed or something like that. They're not putting in just Joe's Midnight Construction Company coming and throwing something in. That happens from time to time, but for the most part, in my four years of approving land use permits, we've seen some really nice sheds go in. And we go out, we drive by, we make sure that they're compliant with setbacks. So personally, I'm not too, uh, concerned or feel like we're at risk of this, but I think it's something to weigh in and consider.
Yeah. So, you know, so for me, you know, there's other things in the, in the code that are, you know, meant to, I've already asked to address the smell and everything, but all-weather materials, I mean, soggy plywood is stinky.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you can't keep, you could be the best keeper, but if you're not starting from a, from a like a good material, it doesn't matter what you're going to do. So anyway, I think, I, I, I like reducing the ambiguity of the code, opening up to more individuals, particularly with the recent history in chicken egg prices. I don't know if addressing the roosters is something we, we do deny, but I'd probably would not want a rooster waking me up in the morning because I'm not that, I'm not top of the morning feller, you know? But I do, I do think opening it up to more people. But I also think being mindful of the, of the added literature to prevent broken friendships, to prevent, uh, coming home from a trip and going, what am I looking at here? Uh, so I, I guess I'm in favor of a majority of even the, the public comments. I, I don't know if I'm in favor of everything, but I do like that we're making this available. And I do think we should add something to contribute to the smell and cleanliness by, by requiring some sort of all-weather material. I think that's, I think that's vague enough to give people freedom, but I, I, these should, these should be able to be hosed down.
Anyone feel differently about making an addition that we have all-weather material? I mean, to me, that's like a hundred percent yes.
Yeah, that makes you right.
And I probably wouldn't have, I wouldn't have voted for that. But seeing every neighboring municipality around here that pretty much copied and pasted each other in that regard.
Yeah.
We don't have to learn that lesson twice. They.
And, and Mike, you know, oftentimes these ordinance come from, oh, we see something really nasty and so now we're going to enforce upon it. And so I think these are good, you know, good caveats of other communities who have likely dealt with the negative effects of it, right?
Yeah.
So I like that.
And Scott, just with the, um, going back to the accessory buildings, like, you know, coops will be treated the same as. We know about the twenty-five feet from the dwelling. Um, I tried, I was going to try to pull up the accessory building code just to make sure, but what does that mean for property line? It's only if it's over two hundred square foot? Or is it always there's a distance from property?
No, do you, were you here when, that we've changed this?
Yes.
Five times?
Remind me, because that's exactly, I'm like, where are we at?
Okay, so buildings up to ten feet can be three feet from a property line. And at five feet from a property line, it's a one-to-one ratio that extends. And we've now allowed buildings to be turned and nested into that one-to-one ratio. So it's, it is effectively a wall height ordinance of a twelve, twelve pitch. So you could have an eleven-foot wall at six feet away from the property line, as long as your roof isn't exceeding a twelve, twelve and kind of above that line.
So with chicken coops, we're most likely looking at three feet to property line.
If, if that, if the corner of that three feet from property line can be twenty-five feet from their neighbor's property, then yes. But yeah, small chicken coops under two hundred square feet could be three feet from the property line. And the assumption is that they have a twelve or eighteen-inch roof overhang. And then water doesn't shed onto their neighbor's property. That's the reason the three feet exists.
So, so just, I have to apply this to me because I'm self-absorbed and that's the only way I understand things. My neighbors can put a chicken coop three feet from the fence, as long as it's twenty-five feet from my house.
And six feet from their own property.
And six feet from their, from their own, from their own house.
But. And that's fire.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's your adjacent neighbor, you're, you're right, a backdoor neighbor on most lots, they're already going.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, yeah, I mean, you're worried about adjacent lots in this ordinance if you're trying to.
Yeah.
In that case, if you were in, there, there are several of them. And there's, there's several homes as you, even as you drive up like four hundred East where the back of the house is twenty feet from the property line. And, but in those cases, you'd be five feet off the property line then in order to be twenty-five feet to the adjacent structure, right? The nearest you could put it to property line. Yeah.
That's, it is close to the property line.
Mm-hmm. And you know, I can only go off, you know, our opinions and, and and the citizens that showed up for the public comments, but it seems like we've got someone that's on the other end of things and the issues that can come of that. And I, and I would like to address that, not just for her, but for me. And I also think we can, it's already, I guess it's already going on anyway, right? People are raising chickens.
They, they are, and this will bring, you know, with all things, this will probably bring many of them into compliance. Not all of them, and we'll still deal with those code enforcement complaints where not all of them are. But as, uh, somehow, like Wheel and Spoke, the planning department became the originator of the code enforcement discussion that has now spoken to police and building and fire and the city council and all these others. And we're thinking about ordinances that are on the books that are difficult to administer, haven't been administered or haven't been enforced. And this is one that feels like it's difficult to administer. It's less difficult to administer when someone asks. But when someone doesn't ask, it's extremely difficult to enforce because it really requires a neighbor to call. And so by, by doing something along these lines, I think we'll bring a bunch of things into compliance that currently aren't. And then we'll deal with the outliers that are the really objectionable ones.
Yeah. And I, and I, I just, I also like the simplicity of the math here. The, the current, the current language, you're, you gotta get a pen, pen and paper out and go for it, you know? Where is this, everyone can address it themselves fairly easily.
And, um, I do love, I love the handout that you provided. And one of the things in the handout you probably provided is that small lot residential zone R one five permitted uses as household pets. And if you go, because City Code is choose your own adventure. Um, if you go to fourteen, one, ten, keeping of backyard chickens, that list excludes R one five. So anybody who's in the R one five zone is effectively not permitted to have chickens by the nature that they're in the R one five zone. And there are a few singled out subdivisions in the R one five zone. And typically they are homeowners associations with private streets that are, you know, have far greater restrictions than just the ability to keep back. That are, you know, have far greater restrictions than just the ability to keep backyard chickens. So I'm, I'm not, I am very comfortable. Keeping it as it is and not applying it to R one five, but that was an excellent catch. Um, but they are already self-limited by that, like in the R one five by only allowing, um. Household pets and then in our list by excluding R one five, because. The, you know, John, correct me, but the way city code works is that if it's not written in there, it's not permitted. And that's why we don't have to put. Pet crematoriums are not permitted in residential zones. Because there, it's silent, it's silent on those, so therefore we know it is not permitted.
But where there's like a table with all of the residential loans listed, would adding that and just saying not permitted, maybe add public clarity? Cause that might be a.
And we can do that. We have, we have section, uh, this section open, so. Make that call, I mean, we could put R one five, you know, not permitted and then just leave it there. And then we'll wait for somebody who lives in R one five who really wants chickens to come in and make the request to change it, but. We will deal with it at that point.
So I think our, if I tried to pull the concerns out of this. And our concerns are twenty-five feet from the neighbor, all weather materials. Are, are, are our concerns, the number of chickens? Is ten too many? Do we want to even tackle that? If you look at Washington Terrace, they do have. Lot size and chicken numbers. But, y- y- you know, I guess we need to decide. Uh, if we want to tackle that and then roosters, I don't see anything in North Ogden code about roosters.
Yeah, they're, they're just generally not.
Just not permitted because they're not mentioned.
Yeah, so they're, they're not permitted in the residential, and they actually, I think they are expressly prohibited.
Yeah.
In the table of the zones.
Yeah.
It looks like one to five acres and over five acres.
Oh, that's right.
Restriction on.
Thank you.
And, uh, and then the other is, I, I can't, I'm not in the code enforcement department and thank you and please never put it in the planning department. That's just a, a general request. But I don't think we bumped up against the, you have too many chickens issue. Like the ten, up to ten, ten chickens has been pretty self-regulating because that is a, it's a lot of chickens to take care of. Uh, on these smaller lots, so that, that is your call if you want to make a recommendation. But the city council would grapple with that. We, we haven't, I, I would have to ask Chief Einan, uh, please Chief Einan, if we have dealt with the. You have an egregious number of chickens.
Okay.
You know, where lots of calves, you know, we, we deal with that, but chickens.
Here, here.
Bad question on the, the ones that are less than point four nine, uh, acres, just ten hens is, is a lot. I mean, it's. Five to six chickens to get two dozen eggs a week, um, you know, and that's in more in the summer and then eight to ten to get the same amount in the winter.
Maybe that.
It's a lot of chickens.
I, I just, I just feel like the, I feel like the municipal code addresses, if you got too many chickens and you're not taking care of them, it's gonna be stinky. And it's gonna be a problem.
That's a fair.
I think it's sort of a self-reg, if, if you can.
It might be.
If you can keep the smell off your neighbor's property with a hundred chickens, I mean. Who's gonna know?
But I think that you, I think it self-regulates with G and H because G says. The chickens have access to an outdoor run, the coop must have at least two square feet. Per chicken and if they stay in the coop, it has to be six square feet per chicken. So you couldn't build a coop big enough on a small enough lot to keep twenty-five feet and six feet.
That's a good point.
Right?
Yeah. So I don't think. Couple lots where you could.
You could.
I do think that we don't need to add more.
Yeah, I agree.
That's true. It's got self-imposing limits.
No one has to agree, but I think, I think it's a good topic, but.
I rescind, I rescind that third.
Well, I mean, why, why it's open, we should discuss all the things. So we don't want to do this again six months.
Oh, no, we don't.
Okay, anything else that anyone wants to bring up about this section?
Um, I would add, I, from the handout, in the RE twenty zone, that eleven ninety-three, I do believe that. We should probably address that because that is another contradiction. Third to last page on the top. And I do believe that's in the code still.
Eleven nine eight three?
Yeah. You probably would just remove that or reference R eleven nine M ten.
Yeah, that's, that's the, uh, the RE twenty section and we did not post that for public hearing, so we would need to. Post that, bring it forward. So we'll add that to our further list of changes, which did pass city council and we made. Thirty-five plus corrections to the code, which are now in the code.
Nice.
Thank you for the planning commission's work on that, but we will add, um, eleven ninety-three development standards in the RE twenty zone. To make it consistent. Cons, you know, consistency is extremely helpful for us because then we can. Administer at once and not, not need to worry about all the differences. And Ryan is taking really good notes.
Yeah, you lost me.
In chicken scratch.
Yeah, I'll take a stab on a recommendation. You guys tell me if it's completely wrong, but. Okay, so, um, we would like to recommend that the North Ogden Title eleven dash nine M dash ten Animals in Files. Uh, be updated to remove, uh, incorrect distance requirements for ch- chicken coops as, uh, detailed in the staff report. With the additions of adding that a coop shall not be constructed of scrap or dilapidated materials and shall be finished with all weather exterior materials. And in the chart, we'd like to add that the R one, um, residential. R one zone has no chickens prohibited, just in that chart for clarity. It's too much of an add-on with the end.
No.
Did I miss anything?
No, I like it.
Well, it's in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'm sorry.
But no, we can do it that way.
I love it. If we don't have to, let's leave it. Yep.
Cause I think you guys have no problems with any other. Yeah, any other.
Yeah, that's my fault.
I'm good with it and I would, I would second it unless there's any other concerns. Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? You feeling okay?
I'm feeling okay. I think, I mean, you know, you can only go. I'm not, I don't know much about chickens, but we can only go off the public comments and our discussion. And I feel pretty good that no one wasted their time coming in and voicing an opinion and, you know, maybe you don't get everything that you. Desired because there's only so much we can do in one motion. But I am, I am, I'm happy with the discussion. No one can say we, we swept it under the rug.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think this is the last of the chickens we'll hear from.
Public here who had different opinions who are now sitting next to one another talking about it. It's a great step.
Okay, so let's take a vote on that motion. We had a motion and a second, um, Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Webb.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Um, okay, cool. So that moves us to item number eight. Public comments, um, any additional public comments? Are we good? Welcome again.
Hi, Jason Westbrook again, North Ogden City. I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to the commission for, for hearing us out and. For, I really do like the language that you guys put in there, especially because I would like to have it uniformed where, yeah, you're fourteen feet back from the curb, but. That would put me into the Utah easements too. So to where you say, you know, or property line, whichever is greater, I think that's a great recommendation. So I just think that was a great recommendation. I wanted to say that I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, William Decker, uh, North Ogden resident. Again, thank you for hearing all of our comments concerning, uh, the chicken coops. Uh, for anything that will be reviewing this in the future, please, uh, advertise something into the community. At least a month ahead of time, so those that have chickens or the neighbors of those can get in here and. Voice their concerns. I got word of the, of this. Two hours before your meeting tonight from an autistic son that saw it on Facebook.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, for, uh, more advanced notice.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, well, I, I would just like to add that it is possible to, to sign up at the North Ogden City site to be notified of. This and this and this and this and this and this has come up. So, I mean, if you have, if you have an account, I mean, an account, but, you know. Email or something or, or text number that the city will send out the little announcement.
Great.
And yes, it really, thank you so much for hearing me out and being patient. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
To sign up for those things because I, I'm technologically.
Good point, good point. Thank you. We appreciate both of your, uh, feedback and hopefully I think what's been done here tonight's gonna actually help a lot of folks with their chicken coops and a lot of neighbors. So hopefully it's a win-win to some degree. Um, okay, so we're gonna turn it over to remarks from planning commissioners. I do have two quick ones. I'm so sorry, guys. I know we're long. Um, the first one is just Scott, um, Ryan, excellent job. I just, those, I feel like we had two potentially very divisive issues. But the way you guys crafted code proposals, I think made a win for both the city and residents. So just, I just wanted to note that. Um, those were, because I was worried when I saw the topics and then when I read the proposal, I was like, ah, creative, like middle of the road solution. So just, I, anyway, and then the second thing, and this is just a real quick question and we can talk about it later. But in the America First, um, just staff report, I didn't realize before, I've never noticed this, that it mentioned that in coloring aesthetics. That, um, you know, our neutral colors are applicable except for when franchise agreement has contingency that they have to have franchise branding. Is there anything we could do to potentially change that? When you think of Jack in the Box, right? You've got a Jack in the Box in Syracuse that's incredibly obnoxious with colors. You have one somewhere else, so I think it might be clear filled, that's more muted. So Jack in the Box comes to mind, um, as an example.
Can I point out the reason that exists? Okay, uh, Nielsen's frozen custard, which we love, and if you haven't gone over there, you're, you're gonna wanna go over and get a custard. Um, their franchise agreement is that those buildings are a shiny white tile exterior building akin to the nineteen fifty's era drive-throughs. Um, the change came about when white as a primary color was disallowed in our resident, I'm sorry, in our commercial code. And that is largely because of a title loan business that usually comes in and picks up. Old existing dilapidated buildings and spray paints them white and puts like a blue roof on them. So if you can picture any of those. I won't call them out by name. Um, but the code was changed for that reason, so that we could allow. Nielsen's frozen custard on property the city owned. That, that exists now, but.
It's a scary world.
Yeah, otherwise we go general, I'm sorry, we, we go muted colors. So for instance, um, Bank of America came in. And their building is like one shade off white, you know, and they, and they presented it to us and it wasn't bright white, but it, it is. Dang near white. Um, Arby's and, and Wendy's, when Wendy's repainted was pretty close to white. But it's again off, off white. Um, so we, we try to just stick to what the franchise colors are. So if one were to come in and is very obnoxious, right now, there's nothing we could do about it. It's an administrative decision. But as planning commission, if anyone on the planning commission wants to email staff and say, you know, John and staff. And say, I'd like to reconsider this to stay at earth tones or to restrict, you know, bright purples, reds, bright greens, whatever the thing is. Uh, we can certainly address that.
Okay, thank you.
We say obnoxious colors?
I don't, you know, but there, therein lies the rub, like.
Yeah, what's obnoxious?
What's obnoxious to who?
We nominate Scott has to enforce.
Thank you. Any other remarks and I appreciate that.
But a good example is there's two colors of Jack in the Box, so it's not a franchise requirement.
Ah, good point. So we could push for the more subdued. Okay, cause one, yeah, anyway, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's quite, it's quite a thing. Okay, um, so we're going.
Just an interesting question on that. Do the applicants present the franchise agreement as, as part of an appendix to their, to their application?
Yes, in, in Nielsen's case, they did and it was the owner who was franchising with the Nielsen's family presented the. Thou shalt build the building as X and then presented several options, I mean, options, several examples like West Jordan's. That is a nearly prototypical building of what we received. So their new buildings are. Exactly those buildings that you see in North Ogden and that's how they want to build them from there on.
All right, um. We will let you because you've been here so many times and we, you have gone the long distance with us, so let's do it.
The question, the thing is with franchisees and with colors. I've been with Big O for thirty-six years. We're on our tenth color change now. Um, and they just came out last October and told us that we need to rebrand and change the colors. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be changing in the next few months and it's gonna be a light gray with black. Um, but. If your franchise says that that's required, they do give you a little bit of leeway if they're city coding. But they come in every four or five years and they want to freshen it up and they want to change it. So. It could be changed at any time from a franchise. So you could come in and say, okay, well, I want, this is the color scheme. But that's not to say it's gonna stay that color scheme.
Yeah, great point. Thank you, sir. Um, and then just in honor of staff time, let's turn it over to report from Scott.
Sure. So, uh, we started today with the Utah APA conference. It's up in Logan. And Lauren Gardner had signed up to go, so we're looking forward to that training today, tomorrow and Friday, uh, half day. And then if you don't follow the, uh, one North Ogden on Instagram, you should. Because tonight it said, we don't mean to ruffle any feathers, but the city will be considering amendments to chicken keeping requirements. And I chuckled. I think it was. So, and you, you should be. So you should be following it. And then, uh, to address our residence point, it's really difficult to get the note, the. Notice out on at-large, uh, zoning changes. It's really easy by state code when it's, when it affects a single property owner. Because we mail within ten days, three hundred feet of that property owner, but if it's addressing an entire zone, an entire city code. There, it, it's impractical for us to send out six thousand notes, right? And in the past, we had used the connection magazine at times. We may, I think utilizing the newsletter might be a good chance and. Yep, and if you have not gone on our website and read the newsletter, you should because there is a whole section that was written. Uh, by the planning department on housing choice. And I think that it's worth reading and it encapsulates. Discussions that we had at planning commission and some of the trainings we've done. So go out and it's, it's worth reading the three hundred words that I was given to. Put in the newsletter article. So please do that. And Ryan, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Hey, thank you.
Um, no, nothing to add. Thank you. Oh, wait, nevermind, I do have something to add. Uh, Katie will likely be reaching out to you. We're, we're trying to do a profile of some of those who are not as visible. Volunteers and helpers in the city. So we're gonna do kind of a little. Here's, here's Commissioner Watson and here's maybe something special about him, but it won't be like a video, video. It'll be like a, a picture with. Elevator music and words or something like that.
My favorite color.
Yeah.
Purple, obnoxious purple.
If you, you know what, if each of you would, would say what your favorite dinosaur is, I think that would be perfect. Cause everyone needs to have a favorite dinosaur.
Raptor.
Thank you.
Oh, good point, yeah.
Okay, we could have a motion for a judgment.